Hi, Chris.
Hello, how are you?
Dr. S. Have you talked to them anywhere over there about anything? Or you're kind of out of that now?
Well, they called too when they doubled COVID, aren't they? Yeah, because they're showing they had to.
Are they going to go ahead and call the school and stuff or is it going to be too late?
No, would you like to do that? They're going to have to do at least one more of those streaks too with that that was already shot in this losing rock.
Yeah, it was like moving in the middle. I wasn't excited, I know.
You'll have to excuse the way I'm dressed, I don't apologize to everybody. It takes me a long time to have to try to undress and dress, so I come in my short hair.
You're fine, I was just going to make a comment about you and Debbie, what's this you wearing?
My sister-in-law got one on, had one on too. She kicked the dog, you know.
She got in the dog fight.
Jim Heck asked me today, he said something about, he said, "What'd you do?" I said, "I had a wreck." And I was in the drugstore and Robbie's wife and Tammy went to laugh and he said, "But seriously?" I said, "Seriously, I had a wreck." And we never told him nothing different.
All right, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. We have three council members here for our regular meeting, that is a quorum. We'll go ahead and start it. I'll start with the Lord of Prayer. Good Lord in heaven, thank you again for this wonderful day you've given us. Lord, please be with us tonight, watch over and guide us and direct us in all that we may say and do. Amen. Great. Thank you. All right. First on the agenda is the minutes from our previous regular meeting and our special meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Any corrections and additions need to be made? If not, then ask for a motion to approve the ones that are presented.
I want a motion to approve them.
Billy makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Stephanie's second, it's all four? All opposed?
You can't do both, can you?
I think that cancel leaves her out.
Motion taken. Next on the agenda is audit engagement. We need to engage an auditor for the previous 18 months. We have been using Becky Roberts and Evelyn for the past, how many? Is that weird?
Several, yes.
She has offered to do it again. I wanted to bring this up like this because I was afraid there might be some issues using her as an auditor, but wanted to bring it up. Of course, I don't, she doesn't deal with me directly, she deals with the staff here, but do you have anything to add about working with Becky?
No, I feel comfortable with her. I know we did have a little issue on this report and I did not remember talking about it before and she said we had, she said in her notes, it was on a 941, but at that time I was going through some stuff too, I'm not going to say she didn't finish. But we got it all worked out with Tammy. I mean, she, when I called, she helps me. If I, if she doesn't understand on QuickBooks, she's learning more on QuickBooks now because she's got some people that are using, more of her clients are using QuickBooks. And what I don't understand, when you're there, she can tell me and then I call her and I'll, this is what she said for me to do on the program. So how do you want me to do if she'll answer it? I'm comfortable with it.
One of my biggest concerns, I guess, would be it's only her. She's the auditor, she doesn't have us to after anybody, so if there's any issues with availability, sometimes it's hard to work out. And so that was an issue I had, but if Tammy's comfortable with her, she's done an audit the last couple of years. What she is proposing is an 18-month audit and she's estimating that cost to be $10,500.
Maybe it just costs $6,000 for the last one?
That's probably just for one year though.
This is 18 months.
Yeah, see, we had that extra long year that cost, we changed that.
Coming, looking at the bank's audit, that's pretty cheap, but I don't know how that compares with municipalities.
When we were looking before, when Bill passed away, we were looking before, I don't know if you remember, she was the chief at one and...
She was the one that was most available to us. Everybody else was good.
Yeah, and the ones that we'd called, even last year when we was kind of calling around just to see if anybody else would be interested, they, nobody had any openings, they didn't do any more cities because they are basically into schools. She came, where she came from is, that she used to work for is the...
Davis Connor.
Yes, Davis Connor. And that's who she used to work for before she went out on her own. So, and plus, Bill Wood's office is the one recommended her because they were audited by Davis Connor. So, you know, it was kind of, she was huge.
Good reference, yeah.
So, I just wanted to bring it up, just to make sure, one, that, you know, what had happened in the past, using her in the past, and two, if y'all wanted to use her again or possibly look at somebody else. If Tammy's happy with her and the cost seems to me very reasonable.
And Chris says that looked reasonable to him too, from what he's seen. And like I said, if it was that hard to find her, I would hate to have to try to start finding somebody else right now too. And if Tammy's happy with her...
Well, we'll probably pay a lot more.
We wouldn't be able to get one, probably. Unfortunately, people are running, they're running, it's too much time to have that audited.
And I'd tell me to have, already have a relationship, you know, and if Tammy, like I said, if you feel comfortable with her, I'm also just keeping her, if she's willing to stay.
Yeah, that's extremely hard switching auditors, so if this is working alright.
All right, in the middle of your audit, that was scary. I'm good with that if she wants.
So, if everybody's in agreement, I'll ask for a motion to engage Becky Roberts for an 18-month audit for the city.
I'll make the motion.
That's okay.
Stephanie wants a motion to the seconds. All four? All opposed? On to item number five, Stone County Central appraisal district. I think everybody got a letter about the three places that were going to be up. In terms of Jim Heck, Bill Madder, and Jim Ward, their terms will expire at the end of the year. Any comments on that?
Do we know if these gentlemen want to rebrand or they do?
I personally don't have any problem.
I don't either. If they're willing to serve again, all...
Yeah.
So, good.
Is there a motion to nominate Jim Heck, Bill Madder, and Jim Ward for three terms for the appraisal district?
They, we nominate and then at the next meeting, they will give us a ballot.
Right.
And then we'll, with these votes here, how they have.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Billy makes a motion, is there a second? Let's see, her seconds.
Now, this is make nominate our resolution, do we have to, we're making the motion to make the resolution?
Nominate.
Nominate, nominate, yeah.
And then we'll have to actually let it go at the next meeting, because that's how I understand it.
And they actually don't, she told me, she said, "That's just the way it's worded," which I've already typed, I think, you don't have to draw up the resolution, you just say it be resolved that.
Okay, that was my question, do I need to change the wording in the motion to say?
No, and I've already typed it up too.
Okay, all right.
I called around that just to make sure.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All four? All opposed? The next piece is approving their budget. Remember last, maybe it was in August? August, we looked at their budget, it has not changed, but the school and the county have already approved the budget and that's all that they need to go for with their budget. So, really, our vote doesn't count for anything, this is more of just paperwork that we need to do.
It's crazy, I mean, I don't, you know, like, we're not on her board, we don't set her salary or her training and all that stuff. That's crazy. From 2012, training, they went from $3,000 to $10,000, that is crazy.
Wonder how much that's required training though? May have changed.
I wouldn't think it would be $6, $700 or so worth, but I mean, you know, that's, and then equipment lease, what do they, I mean, just thought, I'm just being curious, what do they lease for $15,380?
I can't remember what their total, what is their total budget?
$160,000.
$160,000, and then they're only going to get $2,000 from the city, so it's, the city's part is extremely small.
You know, I mean, I, yeah.
That's what I was saying.
I think that mostly what we were supposed to approve on the budget part was what we actually had, that's what we're supposed to...
So, do we know where our part filled in?
Nah.
Do you have $2,000 to skin?
They already ordered eight, $52,000, was what they...
Yes.
I mean, they don't do me, I mean, it's not, no, you know, like I said, if our part's only $2,000, I'm just wondering, but, you know, I can't understand to her, her part too, her, like, because we're not in...
It's a situation.
I mean, it got nothing to do with us, we don't set her salary or nothing, I understand, so, I mean...
We can approve it or this period doesn't really make...
It don't make no difference, but just as well approve it, I mean, it's not gonna, I think we're already been...
Is that a motion?
I guess so.
Seth makes a motion.
Two against one, I don't think we're going to win that battle, that's when we didn't get you.
All four?
Yes, yes, yes.
All opposed?
That was from last year.
I've been looking at your company, your shop, yours, things like that. Oh, yeah.
Well, do they have actual, unless this is probably stupid, when they go out in the phrase, they just look at it or do they have some kind of...
I think they will do it.
They hire somebody so...
No, they go out and they go out and they elevate it.
She always go around.
Because she asks you all these questions and she goes back and puts it in a form, you know, and then it's...
And you go down to her office and she has sticky sitting, looking at property or something.
Yeah.
I'm sure they needed to update and wash her up, I mean, cameras and computers and printers.
I know they are having to hire some people to come in from the state and help her set new records and things up.
Sometimes...
Because there was a lot of things that had not been done in several years and so they're having to bring them up to kind of, I talked to...
That costs a lot of money again.
Like I said, I think with those, the one without help there for a couple of months, you know, that old little wall, you know, put them behind a little bit, I think she did, you know, the best she could, but like I said, and then she just, you know, it just, you have to do it updated.
I don't think any reflection on the job that she did, it's just, you know, the government changes things, we have to be honest, so...
Oh, yeah.
All right, item number six, considering a resolution to authorize the submission of a new grant.
So, what this grant is, is some months back, we actually approved OJD to start the process of building a wastewater plant. That's $476,000, is what the plant came to. This new grant is coming out now, it's a 200, another $300,000 grant. And so what I thought would be better for the city was that if, we would already gained 15 points by matching that grant, so we would go from $476,000 to 200 and some thousand, was to be our part and gain a 15-point gain on the rest of the cities and then use the money to build a new sewer plant rather than us compounding that amount of money. It doesn't change a whole lot of things, other than if we get the grant, it reduces at 176 to 200, somewhere around there. And it's worth a shot, it's some money saved. We can apply for another water improvement grant, since we've just got this one and they're working on that one, we can't follow up with another water, which would have been good if we'd have done that. So, we can go with wastewater, our streets, our some of that, and we wouldn't be able to gain any points on streets, our other infrastructure grant programs do this, but like I said, we already gaining 15 points just off of a match, so, and that's a lot of points to realize every month.
Did we budget into school for him?
No, because we're still a long way off. I mean, we're looking at another year before we'd ever have to give that money. If the grant goes through, we get approved of the grant, then we still have more time for that too. It's not, no, either way we go, this is not a this year thing. This is the next year of the next year, because it takes so long to do the permits and all that. I mean, we're still under the permit process.
Right.
Trying to gather up all the stuff that we need just to get them to permit. That'll take at least 18 months and we're only in it now for almost a year, not quite a year, but, so we still got several months to go before the, before the permit can even be submitted to TCT, so...
So, the grant's 275?
Yeah.
And our match would be 200?
Somewhere in that neighborhood, I think, did y'all get a deal from Howko? It's in the packet.
Yeah, we got it.
You'll see in there where some of that is put in there, what the price of the plant was.
This one right here?
Yeah, I think it's the total, total project.
275, so ours would be 200, and it gives us 15 extra points.
I'll put the Mary back up at 200.
And that's what this is, is application to go ahead and let Howko apply for this grant, so...
Well, I think, yeah, if any grants, yeah, and if it's not a this year thing, you know...
Can you also look at, can you apply grants and foundational monies on the same project?
It depends on the project. It depends on who you're getting the money from. If it's still from another state government, like the agriculture...
Yeah, well, usually foundational monies are private organizations' foundations.
I don't think we can do that if it's state-funded through the, through the Texas Department of Agriculture. You couldn't do it through, like, you could do it through COG, if COG, we got a grant from them to do a project, and then we got funding from somewhere else to help our part of it, they wouldn't care where we got our part of it, that's that third party. We'll with the state, we couldn't do a third party, I don't think, unless they just gave it to us as a gift for some other reason, you know, so I don't think we can apply to the grant part. We have to do a match and a certain percentage of the match is already in there. Like, we get 300 and some thousand, a normal match would be the same as what we're doing now, the 17,000 or whatever that is, that's a normal match in order to get that money, which what we're doing is paying the engineer or funding the grant writer, since there's no money out of our pocket to do that. If money comes in from somewhere else, we'd have to claim that as part of the other and we'd still have to pay the match. So, it would just go back to the state rather than coming to us. On this one, I don't know, I have to look at those, depending on where the money is from.
Well, I mean, I'm all for applying for the grant.
There's one, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Any grant money?
Only thing we can get to help out with some of the costs, it's the costs that we're expecting to have, even if this, we can help cover some of the costs, I mean, it's any way we can make a decision.
I agree. Anytime we get some grant money, I mean, I'm all for it.
Is there a motion to authorize this submission?
I'll make the motion.
Here's some extra motions, is there a second?
My second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? All four? All opposed? All right, moving on to item number seven, Western industrial, y'all should have copies of fourth aid bill statement from them. That's my understanding, sorry I might have to jump in. When we estimated the water replacement, or the water meter replacement project, we didn't estimate for enough water meters, so we had to purchase more meters than we were originally expecting, and that's 6.9,801,95, that's replace all the meters in the city system. So...
How much did we budget for those?
We budgeted $260,000 for 500 meters.
$265,000.
$260,000.
Yeah.
And that's what we borrowed. We pledged CDs and borrowed against those CDs.
Wow.
We have 300 in CDs pledged, actually, so my recommendation is to borrow the additional 29,801,95 against that remaining CD and pay for the meters. And as we realize the benefit of the new meters not losing the water as we have previous been dealing with, that will pay for it. And like I said before, I'd really like to, and we're starting to work on it, we've got a little issue with the billing program now, but we're going to get to the point where we're really looking at this at least quarterly and seeing where we're over budget and applying that to this debt.
And that's been the issue, it's been an issue, I thought, because of that billing program. When we started researching all of this, there is not one person to blame on any of them. We counted the meters, counted the meters, and recounted the meters several times, and the number changes every time we count. But the first count that we did on the computer and in the books, we came up with 500, not counting the meters outside of city limits. Then we decided to include the meters outside of the city limits because they're impossible to read during that weather, so that's only 47 meters. So, we added the 47 meters to that, which was going to be a minimal, we would have never came to the 260 with that, adding that deal, and then we would have had the 25 extra meters on stock. But after we started messing with the billing program, the number keeps increasing, and it increased over 100 meters, is what it increased.
Oh, wow.
And therefore, that's where we're at at this point. I mean, on the books, we show we have, you know, 600 meters, or actually 617, but some of those meters are two-inch, some are one-inch, and some are four-inch. And the four-inch, we won't replace, those will always be manual meters, but we've replaced the two-inch and the one-inch and we've non-accounted for another 100 meters, so we had to get those, which actually still gives us the 25 that we're supposed to have on the shelf. So, actually, hopefully, if we done the count right this time, we have 75 more than what we wanted to replace, added to that 47, so...
And this has been known for a while, they've done math, I haven't done it, but so they've been working on it quite a bit and feel very confident.
So, we got the 300,000 CD that we've already, 260,000 against, basically, and then we're just going to, just bump it up to about 290,000, basically, against the 300,000 CD?
Which we budgeted the money. The money to pay the interest of these loans has already been budgeted in our budget, and we're hoping that we can acquire that from the overage that we're settling the water from, instead of actually taking it from budget, it's actually coming from revenue to pay that. That's the point we're trying to get to, because there should be way less loss.
Right, yeah, like we had hoped, you know.
We should, we should be seeing about $7,000 increase minimum every month from water sales, and this is all based under the 9,000 that we're settling, and that's what we should be seeing every month. We don't know yet because everything's still on the stuff.
Right, right, so hopefully, like I said, we're going to start seeing that.
Yeah. I don't know why the invoice on this is zero, but... I think this is a shipping invoice where they didn't bill us yet, but it's the same bill of only 24. No, what this is, is another city's replacing their meters and they were 24 short and they come and got them from us, because we hadn't installed them yet, and so they replaced them again, and this is, this will be a reason for us to have that one.
I'm sure we're going to be, have another...
This is supposed to be it, unless we order something else, this is it. The rest of the ones that are malfunctioning and things like that, those are all being replaced, we've got severance that that other company broke and they're going to go ahead and make good on those, so...
I make a motion.
Before we start, if everybody's in agreement, I'd ask for a motion to be made to borrow the money against the CDs currently pledged and Billy, as mayor approach him, and Tammy is secretary, sign the note and all the documents that the bank needs.
I'll make the motion.
But you can give them make the motion.
I think we are.
Billy makes a motion?
What Ralph said. What Ralph said.
I hope you wrote that down in the tone there.
What Ralph said. I like that, what he said.
There's a motion on table, is there a second? Her seconds? All four? All opposed? Motion passes. Another bill, this one from ASCO, I believe originally when we discussed purchasing the tool cat, jumping here anytime, so if I'm wrong, we originally agreed to pay with, borrow money against the CD, pay for it, and then we were going to just cash in the CD, pay for it, and now especially since we have these additional water meters, that's kind of getting tight. I forgot how much we have in our legal fund that's just sitting there, that's not being used.
90, 92?
92, 93,000. We've got 92 or 93,000 sitting in our legal fund and a checking account. We need to pay for the tool cat. I would suggest moving bulk of that money in the, in the legal fund checking account into a CD, so asserting interest and borrowing against that.
Bill, what it was, is if we still did not pay them, and, you know, like, we went ahead and started, as soon as that changed over, we started paying in November or October, we paid October's bill, and that has ceased a whole lot of the stuff. And I talked to them the other day, I mean, everybody seems to be really happy.
They're talking to you now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, but now...
Everybody, everybody is good and nobody has brought up anything, they're glad the pass is over, that's kind of...
Well, I think, you might just have problems with the attorney, I mean, it's up to you, but I think it was already in the court system that no matter what the Supreme Court decided, that we'd have to come back to district court to finish out. And probably what they were going to tell us was, yeah, you have to start paying, which we already did.
And that's because when I was reading that part of it, because it did say that they could bring it back to the...
Well, I understood that.
Local court that...
I understood that it was already in the court system to come out.
That would be dealing with back penalties and all that, but I think they understood that they couldn't charge us back penalties anyway.
Right, that's what the Supreme Court upheld, they cannot. But what they could do is what the court, as I said, the way I understand it, the court would come back... But what they could do, and what the court, as I said, the way I understand it, the court would come back to district court and tell us, yeah, you have to pay the 17 cents per thousand.
And that could, it depends on them. It depends on what they want to do. They would have to force that.
Well, I would feel better having a letter or some legal document that tells us, we're done.
Yeah, we won't get that yet.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Definitely. Just tape it. Did we find out the truth?
Are we going to get penalties on this?
We shouldn't, because.
We'll see. Didn't we get ordered this back in December?
Yeah, and you just now got all, you still, you have all the stuff too?
Yeah, we got all the stuff.
With any other options? Guess we could sell it back to them.
I wouldn't sell it.
Maybe they give it a little price? Uh, no, I mean, I think everything else is tied up.
And that's what, and that's what we ended up doing, I mean, we did have a CD set aside with 72,000, something like that, to pay this. And then when we did change all of that to the bulk, one CD, it kind of threw that out of there. But we didn't know we was going to have to have so much on the meter side, so we were going to borrow the same amount that we're borrowing now in to pay for the tool cat.
And I want to tell you too, the reason why you don't have a financial statement is because I can't get the correct numbers off of the billing yet to be able to put into my stuff to make y'all the financial stuff.
She showed me some of them, they.
Did we, we just switched to the, you know, we made a motion before that if they didn't.
And they got, they got the billing part right. The problem now is, is that we double posted it. Half a month, it's posted in the old program, then it was transferred over into the new program, and we billed out. And then when they did the transfer, it didn't transfer all the stuff from the first posting back into the new program.
And they told Vanessa not to post any longer after the 13th of the month that this all went on. She had posted from the first to the 13th. Okay, so then she started, she was doing both. So she quit on the 13th, and so therefore, she just posted over here. Well, that meant when they brought over our counts receivables from that, these payments here aren't in here. So she can't go back and add them in there because it concerns with the new meters, that old system won't take the meters, and part of it. All this other stuff, I mean, it's a mess. So for us to get a true number, we're going to have to wait until hopefully, November to December, we'll get some numbers in there.
To all the new meters, to be, you know, completely?
Oh, wow.
No. But, you know, the. And because I had to take her numbers and do what we call the adjustments, and then that will show what we made for the month before. In that month that we did the transfer over to it, it, I had 111,000 counts receivable, and it brought, and the new numbers they showed me is 40,000. It's like, no, wait a minute, that's.
And I had a 8,000 gallon, 8 million gallon.
8 million gallons.
Increase in water production, or instead of a loss, it was a gain.
So, we've got a big deal, I mean, and, oh no, it's way over my head.
They have been threatened, they have been warned, and they have been told that if they cannot get it done, and we can't get financials done by next month, November, then we will make the change. And the other one is, and we'll still be a month behind anyway, but we'll stop dealing with this stuff. Because it's getting very irritating.
You call, and it's, okay, I'll get right back. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's no. But it's, I mean, it's been a nightmare.
Vanessa has just.
She has done everything in her power, she has, to try to deal with these people, I mean, and she has got mad at them, and she has talked to them, I've talked to them, Sunny's talked to them.
Well, if they're the ones who told her to do it this way, and then they caused this issue, looks like we would be on the forefront for them to get this fixed.
Well, and they tried it, the problem is, is they're delete happy. And so when they transferred it in, after it was transferred, they deleted it. Now, we can't post it in the old system, and so it's gone, it's no more. It's in limbo somewhere. And normally, we wouldn't have needed it, but if we would have went ahead and kept posting in both, the way she normally would have, then it, and then when it did the transfer, it would have just matched the numbers and we would have went home. But that's not what happened, and it was just in the process of the big mess. And them working on getting where we can read the meters and doing the other stuff, it just all.
Wild.
Yeah, and it just got deleted. So, and that's when I, last time I talked to them, I told them that they needed to quit being so delete happy, because I was tired of having to double do everything. And he got with Vanessa 10 minutes later and fixed a lot of the stuff, so. Just have to see, I mean, I said, if it doesn't get any better, we're going to make that change. We're still trying to give them a chance, because we are posting in that account, and we're trying to get financials and overages and stuff like that.
And when we do get it all situated, we'll have new reports. Brenda, Beth Hawkins is going to help me get set up where I would like to see them in a certain way. And so she will come and help me set that up the way it needs to be, but we don't want to do it till we get the right numbers.
Right, there's no sense in that.
I make the motion, we tackle this issue until we look into some stuff, talk to the lawyer, and all that kind of other stuff.
Stephanie, I, this, second, all four? All opposed? Counts favor. Any discussion on that?
Y'all might, I know Stephanie was looking for them a little bit earlier, y'all might see a high bill from HOP, I'll give it back to you.
I don't think I seen that one.
It's $600 for testing supplies, and we may still not be done.
Or the nitrates levels and all that stuff?
Yeah, we run so many nitrates tests, making sure where we're at, that we just run out of stuff. When you run the nitrates, you still have to run your monoclorines, your totals, and your free ammonia, and all of that, I mean, and so it takes up a lot of the material.
Are we testing daily still?
Every day. Yeah, I'll get that in. It may not be in there yet, they, we just now got it Friday, so.
Any questions or comments on bills? Is there a motion to pay bills? Billy makes the motion, is there a second? There's seconds, all four? All opposed? I don't know if Troy Swin. Troy has an issue with this water bill from office, is that right, Sunny?
Uh, yeah.
I haven't talked to him about it personally, so I need to talk to them.
As everybody was, you know, what we tried to do is, that month, everybody's meters kind of got changed every time. You know, once some of them got changed the first part of the month, some of them got changed at the last part of the month. So there was more of the old meter reading, which, you know, gave them the 999 gallons, and some of the new ones had added it back to the bill. Troy's was in one of those that was changed early in the month, so his bill that he got for the following month would have been for six weeks rather than four months. He used, according to the meters, he used 9,711 gallons, he didn't go over, but he used the 9,000. This past month, which he did come and talk to me about that, said he had never used that amount of water. I explained to him about, you know, he got to add those other weeks in there and all that, and I thought he was okay. He got his bill this month, and it was, he used 3,490 gallons. And so he wants a refund of the 30 something dollars, making that there was air went through the meter, which, in the new meters, that's impossible. It does not read air at all. So when I talked to him this other day, he wanted to be, he wanted to be on the agenda, or at least discuss giving him a rebate of the $30 difference in the bill. Because he has never used that amount of water. He has used that amount of water several times.
Do you go over five stock there on there?
Every, every year during that same month, in the past four years, he's used around that same amount of water. I can't see giving him a rebate myself. But I told him, no, but I presented to y'all and let y'all make the decision. Because I told him no. But, so it's up to y'all, if y'all want to give him a $30 rebate for that. Like I say, I've got, I've got his billing registered in front of me, that's back to '05. Yes, '05, and then I've got another one of these sort of transitions, transactions that go by the month, and he's used, in some cases, has used even more than that, 9,000 gallons. Though I say the 9,000, like I tried to explain to him, was not for a four-week period, not for a month. Actually, what you use, not 30 days, it's dependent upon when we read the meters before, and when we read the meters following month. The last two months, we've read, we're close to the same date. And the usage did go down. And instead of taking any kind of chance with the meters being bad, we've changed his meters towards the first part of the month. But that amount of water, that one, that we. And that's all we can go by, is meter readings, we can't go by anything else, the meters test fine. It's an anomaly, I don't know where it's at.
Well, in my opinion, if we, if we do that and give him a refund, we're opening a can of worms to everybody that thinks that, you know, they might not have done that, or, you know, if you, if you, there's no way for you to correct it, if there is a problem with the meter. You know, that would be correct, you know, trying to get through Ashmont in doing all the meters.
Well.
And it shows that, on there, that he has used that much in the past, about the same time of the year.
Yeah, as a rule of thumb, most of the time, what you do is if a meter stops, and it stops registering during a certain type of month, then what you do is you go back for several months or several years, or whatever you wanted, and then you average their usage of, and that's an average bill. When you find that issue that the meter's not working, you replace that meter. Now, if the following month, or the next one, you see a decrease in the water or whatever, then you look at giving them a rebate, if you overcharged them for an average amount.
Can we say that?
But the same goes for the fact is that if you start, you change out a meter that has not been working, and all of a sudden it starts registering, where it used to show they're using 3,000 gallons, now it's showing they're using 8,000 gallons. You don't go back and charge them for all the rest of the water that they might have used.
True.
So, you know, we try to keep that, you know, in our minds when we try to do that, and we have done that, we've adjusted some accounts. And if I would have saw a difference in that account, we would have done that too, in that particular month of that bill.
It was six weeks instead of the four weeks.
But last year, he used 10,000 gallons in that month, the year before, he used pretty close to the same amount. So in those months that's in question, he's used that amount of water, so I can't see that I would give him that rebate myself.
Did you tell them that in the other month, he has used that much water?
Yes.
He didn't believe you, or? Did you show him that paper?
No, he said it was due to air. And that is, that is a thing, that's, that is something that has, has been said in the city before, is that air didn't cause a problem. And the old meters, very much it. All of the customers that we have on the line going towards the road were misinformed of that situation, because the old meters do register air, just like they would register water. But the new ones will not. They, they work completely different. And we did adjust, one customer's meter out there said that they used 47,000 gallons, and we had a leak out there, and it did have air in it. And so we adjusted it back, and we discharged her exactly the same sheet used last year in the same month. I mean, that's all we can do. We adjusted her a big time, so.
But I mean, if we can catch it right, like you said, that month to month to month, instead of, you know, where you can't adjust the next month's bill, or give them a credit like on their bill or something, is what.
If you look down at, he's had a history of the same time of year.
That's what I was letting y'all look, yeah.
We had another customer come in and complained of a water bill, that there's no way they could have used this amount of water, no way ever, they're going, doing laundry somewhere else, and, you know, they're taking all these actions to conserve the water. And there's no way they could have used this amount. And I explained, the only way we can tell is by reading the meter. The meter is, you know, what we have to go by, and if it goes through there, then that's what we charge you. And just to be on the safe side, I went and reread the meter. And in less than eight days, they'd already used 5,000 gallons. They had a water meter they didn't know about. And so that did help. And if you go back and look at the meter, new meter reading machine, it basically said they had a leak, it brought up a warning thing.
That's a lot of them.
Of a deal. And it brought those up, so we look at those. Well, you know, when Vanessa and I look at those, every time that they're posted, or since we've been doing this, we look at those, and we go reread those meters just to make sure, because they did turn a little, I mean, and I say this particular customer, he already used 5,000 gallons in less than.
I know that y'all found one in my niece's house, you got a leak that they didn't know about, and after you turned it on.
That's a good thing, I mean, we still haven't got our parameters set, and we can't set those parameters till all our meters are in, and then we get a, you know, a compilation of all of them together. Then we can set our parameters, but right now, we can't, so it's a hit and miss, and so, but, anyway. But it's up to y'all what y'all want to do.
Well, I mean, in my opinion, is, like I said, it's right there in black and white, of he's used that and everything, you know, and if it was $100, $50, something, a lot more than 30 something dollars, but I think, like I said, we just opened a can of worms if we start that. You know, trying to, you know, adjust far when we had to read the meters for six weeks instead of the four weeks, and everything, I think, you know, I know it's not going to be him, he's not going to make him happy, but we can't make everybody happy. I don't see to giving him that right now, you know, until, I mean, I don't see that it was a big era. If you did all, all possible, you changed the meter out, and we've got the history that it showed that he used that much about the same time every year.
Well, that's all I'll say, that's all we can go by.
Right.
According to our records, in that case, we do not need to do that, so.
Is that a motion, Stephanie? There's a motion for not to reimburse, I mean, he's already paid that, he doesn't have to reimburse. So, motion to not reimburse Troy Swin for a bill, there's seconds? There's seconds? All four? All opposed? Most cheers.
That thing about this wasn't even on the agenda, was it? The report, this report was that? When there had been a question, you know, of all of their protectors, if they report to us, and they had, so she brought that. So she wanted me to let y'all have that, so y'all know that is what she's done with her.
I'll wait to talk till Billy gets back, she has a question on.
That's a lot of stuff that, how much did she get for grant money in 2012? Or is this, the CD of 2005, is that like the year? Or is this, the C of two dot two oh five, is that like the year? Or, I don't know what the numbers are exactly.
She just, I don't know exactly. She, it's really not, I mean, if...
What?
My opinion is, is you need to say, this is what we are requesting. I mean, she needs to go into more detail.
Yeah.
Of how much the grant was, and what she spent on, you know, that type of thing. If there was any that went back to the state or not, or what came out of her lines, or, you know, I think, but that, I think, is just so y'all can...
Well, I understand, yeah. And they bought a utility. What's this, build a storage barn for HA equipment? What is that?
Lawn mower.
They couldn't put it in that big old building they built?
They had the garage under that old office that they used to keep that stuff in.
And then they built a whole new one?
Somehow.
I won't start that pot right now, honey.
I won't start that pot, but I think we need to look into the housing authority stuff a little bit deeper.
I'll start on my report. Y'all know, we had some nitrate issues. The paperwork was sent into TCEQ that we were on our burn. I sent the paperwork in on that Wednesday morning, that we were getting to the point as of October, or, yeah, of October one, that our burn would be over with. We actually got our test results back in, it's having a zero ammonia in our water, that's what we were shooting for. On that same Wednesday, TCEQ showed up and did tritium methane and an ilio acidic acid and nitrate test. I haven't got the ilio acidic triomethane results back yet, but apparently they must be okay, because we hadn't heard anything. But they would normally be high during a free chlorine burn. That's what causes both of those is free chlorine. We were never over the limit of the five, so we, you know, we should have been all right, but they did take a sample of the water coming into the storage tank at Rule. That is a test site. They would have never taken it if they would have received the paperwork that we were under a burn. But they didn't get it in Austin. So they had to do it. It stands, no matter what. It doesn't matter whether they were informed or whether they weren't informed. Yes, the nitrate levels were high in well number two. They were up around a twenty something, to where the nitrate levels in the other wells were at a five and a six. When that tank comes on, it cross circuits. It's always cross-circuited. We're working on that issue now. But that cross-circuit, when that well come in, it cross-circuited and went straight out to the deal. It never mixed with any lake water. It just didn't do it, and that's what happens. That's something we do, when we start trying to mix the water, we mix, you know, we, off and on, off and on, we pump out of the pump house. But when the guy shows up to take sample, we have to make him let him take the sample. So it came back highs of thirteen point two, which, that was good, because the well tested way higher than that. So we did get a little mix into that bill. We pumped that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the test results for the nitrate came back high, which automatically put our whole system in violation, even though it was just water from in Rule. At that particular time, our pumps were off, because we have the eight hundred and sixty thousand gallons we had to get rid of that had straight chlorine in it. And you don't, it's hard to mix the monocloramines with the straight chlorine, because then you don't have total, it's a chemical thing. But, so our water in town has always tested okay. The last few days, when we started trying to mix, we did have some nitrification in it, did get up around a nine point two, but it never went over the EPA standards. So, as in the past, what the city is supposed to do is any time they're in violation, we have to issue the warnings, so we issued all those on Saturday. I called the news, I'm the one that did all that stuff, nobody else did. Called the news and tried to explain to them, we did some interviews, we did all the stuff. We took every action we needed to do, and even, I know y'all, y'all seen, we gave water to the elderly, senior citizens, the nursing home and all that, which is just being overprotective of our people, because that's not part of what the rules state. But I didn't, nobody, you know, I wouldn't have did it, so. So anyway, after we issued those, and we had to start, as in always, is when we're in violation, we have to come into compliance. So at that time, we wasted the water from Rule, and started mixing Miller Creek water with the well water, except for well number two. We left it off. We started catching the samples in that area, and we're getting a good sample, because that's where we have to take the sample. We came back as an eight point six, we came back as a six point two, then we came back as a four. With those samples done in Abilene, then I sent all that information to Austin, to a guy named Sean Staff. Wednesday, when I got the results of the last nitrate test, I sent him what they call a certificate of delivery, and he told me that it was okay to issue a rescind. So I started posting the rescinds on Thursday, because I never heard back through any other way. So we posted the rescinds, we had our ducks in a row. And then Friday, at a little before five, I get a conference call from TCEQ with five different guys that have decided that since, there's some issues that, you know, I fought along, but as of September one of two thousand and twelve, there's a new line item in the rules that state that any time an executive director feels to go a different direction, he can, and we will follow, we shall follow, completely so he says. So as of Friday, I had to take the rescind notices down, because I can't rescind until now they're gonna do a test with a contracted company, who's gonna come in and take a sample, take it to a whole nother lab, and get the results, and then they'll tell me that it's okay. In the past, it's always been up to the city to come into compliance. Now they're changing it to where TCEQ is gonna do that, to see if you are in compliance. Basically, they accused our employee of possibly mixing the sample water with well water. There was an issue with him only having his license for one year. There was some weird stuff, but you can't argue with them to a lot of that point, even though I did, I didn't win it. So they told me then, and it was with the five guys, they all agreed, that all I needed to do was just pull the rescind notices, and then I did send a deal to the newspaper yesterday that explained the whole process of what we're doing. And yes, our water is okay. It's testing at a four. Even in town, we're testing at a four nitrate. But I can't rescind, so therefore, we still, if any parties that fall within that six month three hundred page, or have health issues, they still can come in and get the water and charge. But I don't have to repost another warning, and I don't have to do any, right now, we just don't do any. It's out there, the word is out there, and so I just took down the rescinds. They're not gonna come and retest the water for two weeks.
So we also did let people know...
Yeah.
The pregnant ones, I came up here and called, and she did, thinking, got the pregnant, you know, did all that, so we would be on the same side of that.
Are we on well water, or are we mixing it?
We're mixing.
We're mixing it? I've been asked, and I didn't have, I had not asked you, so I didn't have no idea yet.
We've been mixing, the thing is, like I said, cross-circuit, is the tank is big around, and water comes in here, and water comes in here. When this water comes in on this side, it just flows over in, and the discharge side of the tank is right there. When the water comes in from the lake, it has to flow a little different direction. We've changed all of it. Now we're, the wells and the lake are running at exactly the same time.
Okay, good job.
So they're trying to mix. We have the engineer showing up, because I am going to apply for a, something that should have been done a long time ago, to be able to rechlorinate here in town, rather than trying to have such a high residual in Rule to even get it here. When you start doing that, then, you know, you're taking and giving the people from Rule to here, higher chlorine, and then it's still okay, but it's too high for me. And if I can add the chlorine here in town, then, and keep our residual at a higher deal of a three, I no longer have to do a burn. That eliminates having to do the burn, because you burn the ammonia out with the chlorine.
And then that'll take away our future nitrate issues on, for that.
It will help, it will help for us to catch them quicker. You know, that's the reason we did the burn in the first place, is because we had a really low nitrate in Rule, and we were using seventy-five percent well water, and a lot of times, it was an eighty percent well water, to mix down, because the nitrate levels were really low in the wells. The problem that it caused is that North Central Texas was adding a lot of ammonia and a lot of chlorine to get what they call chlorines. We weren't wasting, we weren't using up the ammonia. So we had an extremely high amount of free ammonia in our system. That causes other issues, it also causes nitrification. So we had a four point six and a five point six at Rule, and we had an eight and an eight point five here in town, that's nitrification. We had to fix that, or we could have all of a sudden, over not jumped from an eight to a ten, really simply easy, depending on the usage of the water. So that's why we had to fix that problem. And, I mean, I wish y'all could have seen some of, at that point when we started, we flushed a water line on a dead end, and the water was green, not from algae, it was green from ammonia. It's kind of a funny thing to see, but it only does it when it hits air, you know, the way we were flushing. But, but all that has been taken care of. We've also put one of the tanks out of service, the white tank that's here. They're supposed to come and start working on it at the end of the month anyway.
The part of that cordwell stuff, I think?
Some of the issue is, is we do have over a million gallons of storage, and we're not using near the amount of water we used to. So that's just way too much storage. So that also causes issues and problems.
How much did Miller Creek catch, do you know?
They have caught almost, yeah, almost three foot total. We're right at a year's worth of water, and with that year's worth of water, that's also in taking not the fifteen percent reduction, that's taking in a full amount of what each city and its D is allocated for. So with the fifteen percent reduction under the stage two, we actually have a...
Good deal.
We're doing good. Our wells, I say well number two, is still high, it's coming down a little bit, but it's still high, so we're using it intermittently. So we're really pumping out of well number three and four mainly. Well number one, we started taking the test again yesterday, and we're still not able to put it online. We've got to have three consecutive reports, and we haven't got three consecutive yet. So it's just, and it's probably my fault, because I don't want to waste the water, but that's what we're fixing to do. I mean, that's the only way to get it into compliance, is to be able to...
Pump it off and start over, kind of?
It's coming back as coliform. It's not fecal, it's not E. coli, it's just coliform, which is there's some kind of algae in there, or whatever, until we can get that out of the water, then we cannot use it. So we're still under that process.
Is there some other use for that water? I mean, I knew you have to get it out of our system, but you just pour it out on the ground, or is there some other use we can?
It's just pumped out on the ground.
I mean, there's no way, I mean, unless you pump it into something, I mean, you know, there's no way to do it, unless you, you know...
We did lace the two inch line, we're gonna go back out away about five more joints, probably sometime this week, and try to put it back out onto the deal, so it's not running down the ditch, it's actually going back into the, and maybe, some of it, we'll see, you know, sold back in. But this is a normal process, you know, of a new well. And that's what it is, it's a new well, and it's been set in so many years, that it's gonna take a lot of pumping, I mean, so. Other than, we're working on nitrate, I say, we've taken nitrate samples from the water tower, we've taken, we have six sites that we take, and they start at Rule, and then they go to the outer edges of the city. We've taken nitrate tests at all places, and we're in compliance in the city, and we have been, we've just been out there. But that water wasn't pumped to here, and, which is a good thing, that's a good thing. Now we're starting to put chloramines back in the water, and so we'll probably end up having a little bit of complaints of some taste in odor, because chlorine, you don't have, you may smell chlorine in it, but you don't smell the fishy smell, and since we're back on wet water, we will have some of that. But that's, that's just part of doing that, but, you make any more questions on that cloud?
Okay.
Does everybody understand what we're trying to do?
Uh huh.
It's been a headache.
Yeah.
Poor Kenny's pulled all his hair out.
Number B.
D or A?
A.
Let's do, let's do A.
A, I mean, yeah.
In the budget, I did budget for another employee, it's not a sole be added or anything, but I would like to go ahead and start searching for, we've been so shorthanded during stuff. Tomorrow, we're gonna be two hands short. I don't exactly know when John is gonna be back yet.
Who's John?
His mom passed away, he's in East...
Oh, I didn't know that, oh, sorry. Oh, I didn't know that.
The other thing is, John has found out that he's got some illnesses, increased sick. Three days last week, he couldn't sit.
Oh, my goodness.
He was, he's got a bad case of being diabetic, and it can't be under control. So I do lose him regularly during the work week. So, since Mingo left, we really missed it working, and even when I go out to do, we're still short somewhere else. So I'd like to add in the paper for that position.
For Mingo's position?
Yeah. I've got, I've got one application, is all I've got, but...
Who's name?
His name is, no, I never got that.
Oh, okay. I don't know that one.
He's, he's Kitty's hometown boy, graduated from here. Problem is, he doesn't have a driver's license, and I told him I couldn't hire him unless he had a driver's license. Why don't you have a driver's license? And I thought, no, I don't have a car.
Oh, hey.
I said, and we try, but I do have his application, and the guy's knowing, so he would be a possibility, you know, but nothing will be done until after we run the ad and get other applications in, and just kind of go from there. I think we kind of, the pay is eleven dollars is what it starts out, and that is, that also gets them to get a D license, and they don't get a A's till they increase to that license. So it's eleven dollars for the year.
Was it benefits?
Yeah, it's a full-time position.
Full-time, yeah, okay. But Mingo just didn't need the benefit, basically?
But I did, when we did the budget, I did add the benefits, the insurance, and that, actually, there's twelve dollars an hour in there, but...
Yeah, well, yeah.
Doesn't start out that much.
Oh, yeah, I was like, shh, it worked.
No, that's, that's what the jobs, the office start out with.
That's what it started out with, yeah, it's what it started out before.
So I'd like to have permission to do that, to add that, start doing that, and trying to find somebody before it gets into the leak season.
Any more questions or comments on that? Is there a motion to...
How long are you gonna run the ad?
So we need to, we need to run it two weeks or three weeks, do we know?
At the minimum, two.
Two, yeah, at the minimum, two.
You can run it more than that if you want to, but I think the very minimum, two.
And, I mean, I would suggest maybe putting something up on the door, because I, in my little job that I've got with the chamber, a lot of people don't read the paper. I mean, it's horrible, I mean, because I'll say, I said you were having this, I said it's been paper for a month.
I think that's a really good idea. I would really, honestly, in my opinion, I'd like to have somebody that's from here, and I'd really like to have somebody young.
Yeah, like, maybe, maybe like over there in the courthouse to put, you know, because like, if there is somebody over there, or there's enough people that can put the word out... that can put the word out.
Well, we can put it on, we can put it on Facebook.
Put it on the Facebook app.
If you remind me, I'll send you the deal.
Yeah, I mean, that's just something, I think, because like, a lot of people, I have come to find out, do not read the paper. They read Facebook, but they don't read the paper.
All right, Billy makes a motion, Chris seconds. Any further discussion? All four? All opposed?
And the next, the next item, I'd like to see if we can go into executive session to discuss this next one.
Is there a motion to go into executive?
Let me make it, because I keep getting left out over here.
I'll, I'll, that's all wrong.
I know.
Uh, Stephanie makes a motion to go into executive session, your second. Your second, all four?